...undeliverable.
Oh, that's good.
And I had a couple of people that had moved and wanted off, but I heard from several people, they said, "Please leave me on."
I'd like to call the Mammell City Council meeting to order. First order of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance. Uh, well, first off, uh, Councilmember Vaprazan will not be here tonight. He is out of town. And then the second order of business is invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I'll lead us in that tonight.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're thankful for the rains that we got this afternoon, Lord. We hope that there wasn't any damage from that. We do know that we have some power outages, Lord, and we'd ask you to be with the people that are affected by that and, and help them get through this heat with their, without having their air conditioners for a little while tonight, Lord. We'd ask you to be with our first responders that serve our city, Lord. We'd ask you to bless them and protect them as they serve our citizens, Lord. We'd also ask you to be with our military personnel that, that are serving our country overseas, Lord, and bless them and be with their families that are back here alone, Lord, and comfort them as only you can. And ask you that you keep the soldiers and airmen and sailors all safe, Lord, and protect them from, uh, from the enemy, Lord. We'd ask you to be with our leaders of our country, Lord, as there's been, as there's been a summit and there's a lot of major decisions being made, Lord. We'd ask you to give them wisdom on all sides, Lord, and help them to have, uh, the, your, your, your wisdom in their mind when they make their decisions, Lord. We ask you to be with our council here tonight as we make decisions, Lord. Ask us to be patient with one another and, and be kind to one another. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have no special guests or announcements on the agenda, even though we have a lot of special guests in our audience out there tonight. We appreciate all those that have attended. Uh, we'll get to some of those later. Next item is the approval of the minutes of the July 2nd regular meeting. Do you have a copy of those minutes in your packet? Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes?
Make a motion, we accept the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of July the 2nd. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment, and I have one public comment card here tonight, and it is not on an agenda item. So at this time, we will hear, and I'm gonna butcher the name, I'm sorry, but I think it's Gennarita Turbonova? Is that close?
Yes.
All right, if you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Gennarita Turbonova, and my address is 404 Riverland Drive, Mammell.
Okay. And we're happy to hear from you.
Thank you very much. So I'm a runner. I've trained for about five half marathons in Mammell, so I'm pretty familiar with the running trail system. And the running trail system here is one of my favorite things about the city. But I have noticed one area where we could use a slight improvement, and I think it would benefit the city. And that is, on my street, Riverland Drive, there isn't a marked lane for bikers and runners. And I think this is a potential problem for two reasons. First of all, there are two trails that Riverland has a potential to connect very well, and that is the running trail that runs up and down Mammell Boulevard. A lot of times, I'll see runners, um, go off their route, like onto Riverland Drive for a loop, and then go back onto the main trail on the Boulevard. And second of all, there are, there's a road called Danube that goes off of Riverland, and there's a trail on it that connects Danube to Arnold Palmer. And on Arnold Palmer, there's a really nice lane for runners and bikers, but there's not a lane like that on Riverland, so if there was, it could connect that whole system very well. And then, second of all, I think it is a safety concern, because Riverland has a steep hill that people will often bike or run over. But the traffic going over the hill is really fast, and the cars don't usually stay in the middle of the road. So I've seen a few relatively close calls with runners going over the hill and cars coming, you know, in the same direct, opposite direction of them, and almost collisions. There is a sidewalk on the hill, but there's a kind of rocky area by the sidewalk, so a lot of times, rocks will fall there, so people avoid that sidewalk altogether because of the rocks. So I think it's better for the safety of the people to have a designated area for them to run or bike in, and that way, we could avoid a catastrophe and some kind of collision. And I think it would also add to Mammell's reputation as a city that's friendly to bikers and runners. So thank you very much.
Okay. And I've got one question. Bike lanes on both sides, is that what you're at?
I think both sides would be ideal. The road is relatively wide, but I think one side would definitely be better than nothing, and would be appreciated.
Okay. All right, we'll look into the matter, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for coming.
I admire her for running that. That's a horrible hill.
It's only bad going one direction.
That's true. That's true.
All right. Next item is the financial statement review, and Ms. Vega's here tonight to give you the financial statement for June.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, we'll go to the first slide. Sorry for the date on there. I missed that until right this moment. So this is showing our fund balances, and all of our balances are at or above budget. And the, the yellow is our required 20% minimum of our general fund budget. The next slide. This slide is showing that our county millage is up 6% over prior year. County sales tax are up 1% over prior year. City sales tax are up 22% over prior year, and franchise fees are up 3% over prior year. Go to the street fund, okay. The state turnback is down 6% over prior year. The street aid is up 7% over prior year, and county millage is up 3% over prior year. And then sanitation fees are down 14%. Okay, our general fund expenditures, um, there's nothing that's, that's new in the variances compared to prior months. It's still the same. Police and fire are up due to increased wages and law fee expense, and the senior center is up, um, due to expanded services. And, uh, CED, the, um, economic development, um, you know, relative, it's a small number, but, uh, it's up 54%. And I was excited about that because it's due to advertising. Okay, the general fund, um, this is a pie chart showing our expenditures in a different way, and you can see that, um, police and fire are major expenditures. Okay, the next slide. We're halfway through the year, and I wanted to look at the budget, um, compared to where we are in the year. And you can see that in the general fund, all departments are under 50% of their annual budget. Okay, we've got street fund expenditures, and, um, that third entrance, um, we're waiting on $61,000 reimbursement, but all the other reimbursements have been received. So the variance there is due to the, um, reimbursements that we have not received. Um, the, uh, vehicle maintenance is, is up $19,000 over prior year, and, um, fuel costs are up. But the other side of that, too, is, um, the 2017 budget or expenditures did not have the fuel allocation through June, and that's corrected at the end of, uh, July, when I got here. Just throwing that out. Uh, sanitation expenses, um, they're, they're up, um, and that's due to tipping fees have increased, uh, $9,000 year-to-date over prior year, and again, the, the fuel allocations. I also want to give you an update on the budget, I mean, on the audit. The auditors were here for the last two weeks. Friday was their last day. It has been determined that additional compliance work is needed, um, to complete the 2017 audit. This is due to the city receiving federal money that exceeds $750,000 threshold. The last time that we, um, had to do this type of compliance reporting was back in 2010. So we don't know, um, we haven't been told, you know, any estimated time, but they're working on it fast and furious. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Councilmember Anderson.
Um, thank you. Uh, I, at the beginning, you kind of told us that, uh, revenues were up, up, you know, in, in various areas. Do you have, like, a total revenue, um?
It's in your packet.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that part, I'm sorry.
Um, well, it's in-
No, I mean, total revenue percentage.
That were up?
Yeah.
Not on maybe.
Okay, no.
But I can start providing that information.
It's just, it's a good kind of thing to just keep it in mind.
Right. Well, I did look-
I kind of can do it on my own. I just wondered if you had that.
I did do it for police and fire, and, um, year-to-date, um, police is only up 3% in their expenditures, and fire is up 5% year-to-date. And so, you know, while we talk about these added expenditures, um, I mean-
Really not as-
Right.
On the true budget. That's, that's kind of the point that I was trying to get at, is that, you know, when we set our budget every year, it's, 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 it's not the true cost and revenue, you know? We'll get that at the end of the year, and I, that's what I was just trying to-
Right. Right.
Illustrate. You did it more eloquent than me, but.
Any other questions?
And we're, we're up $600,000 over last year at this time in revenues, so that's slightly less than 10%.
That's what I was wondering if we were above the 10% mark, so.
We're slightly below.
We're not there.
Yeah, we're not there.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Scott.
Yeah, I've got two questions.
Okay.
Ms. Vega. The city services, uh, was way down according, uh, spending year-to-date. Are we gonna be okay with that? Is it just a catch-up thing, or are we just underspending?
Um, no, I believe that it's gonna be, it's a timing issue.
And the other thing, with the sanitation tipping fees having gone up, are we gonna be okay?
Yes, we're gonna be okay. We're gonna be in a better place. I believe our collections are gonna go up, um, when CAW takes over.
And, and the, the tipping fees increased last year, but they increased toward the end of the year, so we budgeted for the tipping fees in this year's budget. Councilmember Mosley.
Yeah, the item we discussed this afternoon by email, I just thought I'd mentioned to everybody, the, uh, police and fire resolutions we passed totaling about $150,000 are, are not yet reflected in the 2018 budget revision column?
Correct, and that's because, um, they're effective, uh, July 1st, and so they will be in our financials, um, for July.
Next month, okay. So at that point, uh, total, the budget expenditures will be a hundred, about $150,000 higher.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else?
Councilmember Saunders.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a curious question. Um, our city, our revenues are up, and one of the contributing factors is the city sales tax. And it seems-
No, not at this time. We have not received any, um, um, sales tax for the new, um, sales tax that was passed, and we won't see that revenue until the end of, I mean, until the middle of September. It'll be on the September financials.
But I think I saw that our city sales tax has gone up.
It has gone up.
And I'm just curious, it tends to be trending up. Is this an economic thing, or is this a timing thing from checks?
I believe that it's an economic thing.
Okay.
But, you know, we're in the summertime, and people are out spending money, so, um, it's not surprising to me that it's up during the summertime.
Well, I, I noticed that it's up significantly from this time last year.
Correct. Correct.
Well, I hope it's a trend. Okay, I was just curious if you-
I was hoping it's, I'm hoping it's a trend, too.
Thank you.
Chick-fil-A.
Chick-fil-A, there it is.
I don't know if, I don't know what it is, but it is a trend, and, and almost, uh, every five of the six months have been up above last year, so.
That's a good one.
Yeah.
Well, and, and plus, US Pizza, you know, they have a new location, a larger location. I think that their sales have gone up in Sonic.
And Amazon is sending us money now.
There you go.
Oh, yeah, that's it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
If there's no other questions, I hear, motion to approve the financials for June?
Second.
Wow. I think that was the whole room. You can pick whoever you want to. We have a motion and a second to approve the financials for June 30th. Is there, uh, any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is departmental reports, and, um, we do those at the first meeting of the month, but we've gone through all of the departments other than finance, uh, and so they, everybody's reported except for finance. Do y'all want to keep doing that and just start repeating some of the departments? Is that what y'all prefer to do there?
Sounds good to me.
I, I wonder if it wouldn't be better to ask the directors to come and respond if they have new information?
Okay.
Or, or changed information?
And, and what I typically do is take volunteers, so I will, I will try to do that, so, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause they don't need to come in and just repeat the same thing.
Right. And we might let Ms. Vega come in and tell us all about her department, since she just came on the second meeting, too, so. All right, okay. Just wanted a little bit of guidance on that. All right, next item is a procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only?
No move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. We have no unfinished business. The next item is new business. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by, that ordinance, uh, 959 by title only, please.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 959, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of sales and use tax bonds for the purpose of financing the cost of capital improvements, pledging sales and use taxes to pay the principal of the interest on the bonds, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, you had a copy of the, uh, uh, ordinance in your packet, and the sale was today, so you have a new ordinance at your seat tonight that has the blanks filled in, has the interest rate and all that in the bond, or in the ordinance except, itself. So we also have, we have LeAnn Burnett here from Stevens to help us walk through this. We've got, uh, Ms. Kirby Maraya, uh, from Wright Lindsey Jennings, and Mr. Walter McSpadden is here. Mr. Spivey, uh, actually wanted to be here tonight, but he had an encounter with bees over the weekend, and so he cannot be here tonight. Uh, so we're sorry to hear about that, but he, we are in good hands. He assures me, and I know we are, uh, so we've been working with Kirby and Walter both on this issue, uh, in, uh, some of Bill's absences, actually, as a matter of fact. So we've been working on this. So, uh, I've got lights on, so do y'all, I was gonna have Ms. Burnett come up and, and walk you through it before we started answering questions. Okay. All right, Ms. Burnett.
As can see.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Again, my name is LeAnn Burnett, and I'm with Stevens. We served as your underwriter for the transaction today. I thought it would be helpful to start at the beginning. So when the ordinance was passed last fall, I guess it was December, 1st of December, to refer this to the people for a vote, you had an amount that was in, that showed up in that ballot item, a not-to-exceed amount. And you can see on the, the single page that went around the room, this compares the information that we, uh, arrived at for that ballot to the bond issue that was, uh, priced today. And really, the way you start with this is you start with the project fund amount that's needed. So you can see under your uses of funds, the amount that was allocated to the project, and that amount came from your mayor. And then we completely estimated cost of issuance and underwriters discount. And then we also provided an amount for what's called a debt service reserve. And basically, when a bondholder buys sales and use tax bonds, they like to know that you have a certain amount of funds set aside in case sales tax collections are delayed, or they don't come in at the levels you expect, whatever. And so, to be conservative, you, you never want to get into a situation where you go to price bonds and you don't have enough authorization. And I can tell you, I've been involved with bond issuance since 1999, and as a client, that happened to me one time. The underwriter called and said, "I have a potential bond investor who is interested in this type of structure," and we didn't have enough authorization to do it, and it would've saved us money. So keep in mind, we're conservative when we come up with this not-to-exceed amount. The debt service reserve, for our estimate and coming up with the not-to-exceed, we assumed 100% fully funded debt service reserve, cash funded. And that means that you would basically be borrowing money to set aside one year's worth of your payment. Okay? Now, so that's the first column, and that's, so we take our uses, and then you back into what you have to issue to cover your uses. Are there any questions about that? Okay, because that's the fundamentals. So then we go to price bonds, and so what we do, and, and another point that was helpful to the mayor, uh, when we discussed this, is that the debt service reserve, when we calculated that number, that maximum annual, we assumed like a 4.5% interest rate, because we didn't know what interest rates were gonna be by the time you, you know, the people voted on it, and then you go through the process to, to actually issue the bonds. So again, conservative. Your bond issued today, um, and, and we can actually either move to the second sheet or stay on this one, I don't know which one you prefer, um, the structure resulted in a premium. And so I think we need to, let's go ahead and go to this packet, and we're gonna get into the details of the 2018 bonds, just knowing that actually the first page of the packet, uh, just provides a little bit more detail than what's on the single sheet. All right, so for the issue today, again, we were solving for a certain amount of project funds. We fine-tuned, uh, the underwriters discount, which includes, uh, it's Stevens fee, so basically for structuring the bond issue, for paying the salespeople who are selling the bonds. There's cost of issuance, which includes your bond counsel fees, your trustee fees, clearing and closing fees, which includes, like, every bond maturity has a QSEP number. Well, you have to pay for that QSEP number, things like that. And then a surety bond fee. And what we were able to do is there are two companies that actually provide bond insurance, and they provide surety policies. Well, with your rating, which I don't know if you all heard, but congratulations, these bonds were rated double A minus by S&amp;P. Oh, and I would love to tell that story. It's a great story. This was a tough analyst we had, so I was especially pleased with the double A minus, which by the way, is one notch below the state of Arkansas. So congratulations. They looked at your economic development, they looked at your population, your growth, um, the, uh, different, uh, they actually look at the detail that DFNA provides about the types of businesses that are paying sales and use tax. So congratulations, great rating. Well, we didn't need bond insurance, right? Because you can only get a double A rating from bond insurance, and you have a double A minus. So we did ask the insurer companies if they would provide a surety policy for your debt service reserve. So instead of borrowing either 100% of your maximum annual payment, or 50% of your maximum annual payment, we'll just buy an insurance policy. And they came back with the two companies, we had, uh, two quotes, the companies that provide this, and the lowest was $11,461. So basically, instead of borrowing a half a million dollars to fund a debt service reserve, you're gonna pay $11,000, and that's covered. Okay? So, so that takes care of all your uses. So that helps size the issue. So then you get into this, well, what's the par amount of bonds? Well, that depends. Are you gonna sell your bonds dollar-for-dollar? Or are you a retail buyer who likes to buy at a discount? So maybe you want discount bonds where you pay 98 and get a dollar at maturity? Or are you an institutional investor who's managing a portfolio and has to manage against interest rate risk? So you want a 5% coupon, so you pay me $1.10 and get a dollar at maturity. So you have pars, premiums, and discounts. The net of your structure, which I'll show you in a minute, resulted in a re-offering premium of $362,000. And so your par was $13,915,000, which would be on, that's gonna be your debt, that's the bond balance. Your premium proceeds you receive, because investors paid more than a dollar per bond, to come to the $14,277,000. Are there any questions about this page? Okay. We go to the second page. This shows you the details, and this may be more than you want to know, but this really shows you the structure of your bond issue. So you had serial maturities from 2019 through 2033, and then you had two term bonds in '36 and '38, and that's what was priced. So you can see the third column says coupon. So the first maturity in 2019 had a 2% coupon, and it yields $1.64, 1.64%. So basically, the, uh, bond purchaser has to pay up for that 2% coupon. So you can see the price is more than par. It's 100.328. Okay? But then when you go down to 2031, that was a 3% coupon to yield 320, so that was a discount bond. That, uh, the price was 97.894. So the net of all that resulted in the re-offering premium. And so you can see kind of the reconciliation at the bottom, and this is the page that ties to your ordinance on that first page that shows the par amount of bonds of 13,915. It may be the second page, actually. Then your premium, it is the second? Okay. Less the discount to right at the bid, or the total purchase price of $14,110,416. Are there any questions about that page? All right. And then page three and four are just simply your debt service, your semi-annual debt service. So basically, interest is paid twice a year, and principal is paid once. So the maximum annual debt service for your bond issue actually shows up on the last page. It's $975,381. And, um, looking at your 2017, uh, tax revenues, I think that was $1,170,000, Mayor. So you can see there's a little extra, and that little extra is so that we don't have to touch that 50 cent, the half-cent tax for public safety. And I was directed at that at the last meeting. So this gives us a little cushion. Obviously, with the great news that your, uh, finance director reported on your sales and use tax growing, that money's just gonna go to call bonds, call the debt. And, uh, based on this structure, at the stated maturity, it was a 20-year bond issue, stated maturity of August 1 of '38, with 0% growth, these bonds are expected to pay off in 16 years, August 1 of '34. With 2% annual growth, it'll be less than 14 years, and with 4%, it'll be approximately 12 years. So it'll be interesting to see if we can hit the 4%. That's right. Again, congratulations. We at Stevens appreciate the opportunity to work with you. As I told the mayor today, I had some very interesting discussions with the sales force who called and asked questions. They know your city. They know it's a great credit, uh, and so it was definitely a pleasure to visit with them and tell them the story of Mammell. I definitely mentioned, um, the restaurant that the mayor mentioned earlier, uh, because there's previous records of, of how well those, uh, restaurants do. So anyway, congratulations, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
She answered mine.
We did a good job. We appreciate the good job.
Thank you very much.
And the, the use of, uh, the insurance was excellent.
Yeah. I love that.
Yeah, we saved a lot of interest money that we would've paid over the 20-year period, so, yeah. Councilmember Holt?
Good evening, ma'am. Good to see you again. We had lunch together at, or at the same time, or at the table, uh, at our municipal league, so enjoyed visiting whether they're. The, the mayor sent me a whole bunch of information that I had requested today. I think I kept him busy for a little while. And I, what my question was, um, the total amount that we will pay in our, our yearly premium, I think he said $1,010,000 per year?
That was, that was before the sale today, though.
Okay.
So, so look on the page.
So now it'll be less than $95,000, is that what you said? $975,000? $975,000?
That's a bold amount on page four.
Okay. So that is a collective of all the bonds that we own? Is that, what we're doing here is?
Just the sales and use tax. You have three bond issues, assuming you move forward with this, we have three bond issues for the city of Maumell. You have your 2012 bonds, which are secured by your franchise fee revenues.
Right.
Okay? And that comes out of Ms. Vega's department. Franchise fee revenues, you know, received from utilities using your right-of-way. Then you have 2015, which is a specific pledge of a millage, a property tax, okay? And those bonds, the balance outstanding off of Bloomberg today was $13,845,000.
On the 2012?
On the 2015.
2016, okay, 2015.
And the 2012s have a balance as of $7,400,000, okay? And then, these bond, and those are pledged by the property tax. So something completely different. So those bondholders have no claim to what we're talking about today. Your sales and use tax, bond issue, principal amount $13,915,000.
Okay, so we're paying, we're paying for the 12 and the 15, but we're paying for this one also, is that right?
Yes.
Separately?
From different sources of funds, yes.
Okay, that's what I was trying to put in my mind.
Yes, yes.
So I was trying to get to the point, how many dollars collectively? But I'll, am I right on that, Mr. Mayor?
Well, I mean, I guess, I don't know, I mean, I don't, you're mixing all kinds of pots together, so.
Right, well.
But, but the property tax is, that goes straight to the trustee, and they make that payment. That doesn't come to the city to pay, so.
Oh, okay.
And this one is the same way. So, the half-cent sales tax that's collected, well, actually, the one-cent sales tax will go to the trustee. They will make their payment, or pull 1/6th and 1/12th to make the payments for the year. And then, they will forward what they don't need to Ms. Vega after three days, is that correct?
By the end of the month.
By the end of the month, okay.
I was just, good, I appreciate that. I was just trying to clear that up.
And I'm happy to do a one-page summary if you think that would be helpful.
I think I'll be okay, but I'll, I may recall on you to ask you to do that.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
But, so the franchise fee, we pay out of the franchise fees we collected, which is the 2012 bond issue. So we make semi-annual payments to the bondholder, the trustee on that one. And then, we make, we don't make the payments on the property tax. That's made by the trustee to the bank. And then, the, this one would be done the same way. Yeah, but it's.
I just, it's something to me, like, I didn't know it bonds, you know, this is not something that layman does.
You're exactly right.
No.
That was a great question.
How much are we already responsible for?
Right.
But, what you need to take note of, it's just what Ms. Burnett said a while ago, is if you look on the page, it says 2 of 2, but it's page four of this sheet she handed out. The $975,000 is what our debt service is.
Right.
All right, but we expect to bring in 1.179, or 1.18, whatever, I mean, so, so 1.18, we plan to bring that in next year, based on estimates, based on previous collection. So almost $200,000 will come in, more than our debt service fee, that will be used to retire bonds early. So they'll start on the 2038 ones first, and start retiring those bonds.
On the back end.
And they, yeah, start on the back end and work their way forward. And that's why she was referring to, if there's zero growth, they'll pay off in 2034. But if there's 4%, it'll pay off in 2030, roughly, those numbers. 12 years, right? So it might be 2031.
Yeah, that's right, no, 30, you're right.
12 years, so, yeah. The first payment's not due until '19, so maybe I'm.
No, 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 you're doing, that's correct. Because I went from when the tax began, which was July of '18.
Okay, okay, all right.
Because you want that tax off the books.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and then that tax will go away the minute these are paid off. The half-cent tax, not the half-cent public safety tax, but the half-cent bond tax will go away.
I'll only be 95 when we get that paid off.
So, or is that 2020, or, I mean, 2030, or which year is that?
Mayor, do you need a?
I, well, I guess I need a motion. Well, hang on, I got still some more questions, yeah. I'll need a motion, yeah. Councilmember Scott?
Yeah, just two things. One, is I had asked City Attorney Norris to put together a placeholder franchise agreement ordinance. Because as landlines diminish, we need to make sure that we're capturing broadband revenue. So, he said that he would do that. And then, when the next renewal comes up, we'll negotiate that difference with something that we have in hand and not have to do it at the last minute. And he agreed that he would do a draft of that. And then, the 2015 millage, I believe we're three years ahead on that, aren't we?
Ms. Vega says yes, so.
Yeah.
I'll take her word on it. I don't, I didn't, I didn't look at that comparison, so.
I think the financial, the debt financial condition of the city is very strong.
And we always, we, well, we typically pay those off early because the assessed value of the property grows in Maumell. So anytime there's a new building built on a vacant piece of land, or if the county does a reassessment and the property values go up, that makes that increase.
So these homes, homes that are planned, and the apartment addition down at Villa?
Villa.
All of that's going to help retire these bonds early.
Right. Councilmember Mosley?
Do we have a final number on what that interchange is going to cost? How much money do we have to deliver to the state?
Well, I don't. And we won't have that final number till the project bids in September. The project is going to bid September the 12th, okay? And there's, you know, the estimate is $14 million. That's the engineer's estimate. I am a little, I'm a little concerned about the steel prices, only because a lot of steel comes from China, but there's a lot of steel manufactured right here in Arkansas. A bridge uses a large amount of steel. So I'm a little concerned about that, because when we did the estimates, the tariff had not been put on steel and aluminum. That was coming from China. So, there's a possibility it might come in slightly higher. But, we also had been holding back some money in the street fund a little bit to cover that. So if it's $500,000 more, the city could take money out of the street fund, pay that $500,000. If you don't want to do that, there is the additional borrowing power right here based on the $1 million that we're saving. It might be $850,000 or something like that that we're saving, that you could, but it would take council action to use more money and sell more bonds in order to do that.
Doesn't this have a 10% contingency as well? The 14?
It does, it has, it has a contingency, yes, it does, yes. But. The, yeah. So, yeah, it has a 10% contingency on it. The construction estimate does. So there is still a buffer. This, the, it is on the cities, or it is on the cities. It is on the Arkansas Department of Transportation's website. They're listing the price as $10 to $15 million. It's what they've got listed on the price of the interchange. So we could, you know, based on their numbers, it could come in $10 to $15 million.
And tariffs would affect steel, but not necessarily the other materials that are going to be needed. And certainly not the labor.
That's correct, that's correct, yeah. It would simply be steel. And, and I don't think, I don't think our steel's going to come from China. That's what I don't think. But I do know that if, if they're paying more for steel coming from another country, that may allow the steel manufacturers here to raise their price to match it, so that they're not just giving their steel away.
If the cost of the interchange is, is less than what we're issuing here, what, what happens to the excess?
It could be used to retire bonds.
That is correct. We have an extraordinary redemption provision in your documents that allows you to use money not spent, proceeds not spent for the project to redeem bonds.
Okay, would we spend, would we do that right now? Or would we hold on to it for just, we don't know?
Well, the documents have a specific time frame.
It has to do no longer than 30 years.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And the construction would be 18 months to 24 months. So I would think you'd want to do it as you knew the project was winding down, so.
Yeah, that'd be, sounds good, thank you.
Yeah. All right, are there any other questions for Ms. Burnett, or Ms. Maralia, or Mr. McSpadden? All right, okay, what I do need is, I need a motion to suspend the rules and have the second and third reading of this. And, and the reason that's so important is, we had a bond sale today. These bonds were actually sold today. And that's how we got the interest rates and everything locked in. If we don't, if the council doesn't approve this tonight, that means they've got to go back three weeks from now and try to sell those same bonds over again. And you're probably going to lose some buyers if we have to do that. And so, it's very important, if we can, that we pass this tonight, because it's the, the people voted in March that they wanted the interchange built. And so, this is just a function to get us to that point. And so, I, you know, and we're down, I mean, I'll just say right up, we're down one council member. And it takes six votes to suspend the rules. So, that's where I'm going with, with this description. So everybody knows what we're talking about. But I need a motion to suspend the rules, and then it takes six yes votes to allow that to occur.
So, so moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and have the second, third reading of this ordinance.
Is the emergency clause done separately?
It is done separately, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. That will actually be done after you vote on the ordinance, so. Okay, Madam City Clerk, if you do roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes. Okay, thank you all very much, I appreciate that. All right, Madam City Clerk, if you do the second, third reading?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 959, and ordinance authorizing the issuance of sales and use tax bonds for the purpose of financing the cost of capital improvements, pledging sales and use taxes to pay the principal of the interest on the bonds, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declaring an emergency. Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled Ordinance Number 959, and ordinance authorizing the issuance of sales and use tax bonds for the purpose of financing the cost of capital improvements, pledging sales and use taxes to pay the principal of the interest on the bonds, prescribing other matters relating thereto, and declaring an emergency.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Make a motion that we accept ordinance 959.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept ordinance number 959. Here's our discussion on that motion. Councilmember Holt?
Okay, the horse is out of the stall, so it's a little late to try to say no. But with your permission, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to have just a couple of minutes to voice my thoughts about the way I feel about this. You know, I, anyway. What I want to say is that the total, as of March 16th, according to the printout, March 26th, according to the printout at the voter registration office, we had 13,118 registered voters available to vote. The total vote here in Maumell was 2,667. That is a total of 20.33%. The total vote that voted for was 1,343 actual votes, or a 10%, 10.24% of the total electorate. The vote against was 1,324 actual votes, or 10.09% against it. The margin of victory was 19 votes. That 19 votes represents, of that, of, more in favor, represents a total of .145%, less than 25% of 1, of 1%, less than 1/4 of 1% of the total elected votes. For me, the thing that's different about this election, and again, the horse is out of the, but I want to have my say, and then I'll go from there. What makes this election different is that a group of citizens known as the Maumell Vision for the Future Group, consisting of 42 members and 24 businesses, paid for the special election, as well as promoted, organized, and controlled the public hearings. They chose a special representative to speak for them, who did a very good job indeed. This was not, the city council was not asked or did not participate in this, although several members did speak at the, at the hearings. The regulation says that the city council has a responsibility and control of finances and all real and personal property. But we were not a part of it. I just simply feel like that this was done by a special group. It was not promoted by the city council. It was not promoted by the members of the city itself. And I am not convinced that there is actually enough votes overall for the entire 13,118 registered voters, that this really means that the city people of Maumell are actually for this affair. So here we are, voting for $15,595,000 bond issue. Let me, in behalf of Ms. Leanne, if she doesn't mind, this is the, this is the folder from Stevens. And with your permission, Mr. Mayor, no offense intended, I want to read just what Stevens said. It's their disclaimer. Stevens is not recommending an action to the municipality entity. Stevens is not acting as an advisor to the municipality entity and does not owe a fiduciary duty pursuant to Section 15B of the Exchange Act to the municipality. And with respect to the information and materials contained in this communication, Stevens is acting in its own interest, and the municipal entity should discuss any information and material contained in this communication with any and all internal and external advisors and experts that the municipality entity deems appropriate before acting on this information. So, that's just my position on it, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm probably going to go ahead and vote no. I'll probably lose my election, but I can't help it. I've got to clear my conscience, ladies and gentlemen. I think it is up to us. We are supposed to be a deliberative body, and I think that we should discuss things. And I just cannot see us acting as a, as a, just a puppet and that we go ahead and vote for whatever we're told to vote for. And I don't mean to be disrespectful in any way. I simply believe that as a member of the city council, that I am a member of the legislative body, and that we have our own responsibility and fiduciary responsibility to the city of Maumell to at least discuss it and know all the facts before we, we jump. I know one council member had mentioned in his speech that it is a leap of faith to go ahead and do what we're doing. So I apologize if I've offended anybody, but at least my conscience is clear. I'll go home and sleep tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holt. And all I'll say is, there was less people voted in the primary than voted in the special election in Maumell.[1616.41]
Well, I'm just saying that, 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 that one thousand three hundred and forty-three people that voted yes represented only ten point two four, two, four percent of the total of people that could have voted. So a ten percent, that means eighty-nine percent, eighty-nine point seven two percent did not vote for it. So it's, it's okay.
I understand what you're saying, but all I'm saying is, there would have been less people vote in a special election, and so you have representatives that now represent to you, in either the state senate or possibly the state house, that make up a less percentage of that number.
Right.
So I just want to make that clear.
Sure. I understand, and I, and I accept the argument. I just, I felt like that I couldn't sit here and, and not at least speak up and say something. So no offense intended to anyone.
No offense taken.
Councilmember Mosley?
I was just going to say, I appreciate most of your comments of, the, I didn't like the process that we had. I don't think there was enough public discussion about what took place and that sort of thing, but it did pass. And so I'll be voting yes tonight, just because of the voters' will, I guess. But certainly appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mosley. All right. We have a motion and a second. Great, yes. Okay. All right. Madam City Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. At this time, we need an emergency clause to adopt the ordinance under emergency clause.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the emergency clause tonight. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, Madam City Clerk, if you, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yes.
Councilmember Saunders?
Yes.
Councilmember Scott?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Timmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you all very much for doing that, and I want to especially thank Ms. Burnett. I probably wore her out the last week with questions and even late at, late into the evening and a few other things. So I appreciate her, and also appreciate Ms. Maralia and Mr. McSpadden for being here tonight from Wright, Lindsay, and Jennings, and for all their help. You know, half this packet is documents they prepared, and so...
Sorry, I'm going to write it all down.
So, but Kirby'd been sending out emails all the last week, too, and everything, to make sure this was all done correctly, and, and our city attorney's been reviewing it, and we've been looking at the documents. So I appreciate everybody's hard work on this, and I really do think this is the future of Maumell. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And y'all are free to go home so that y'all can spend time with your families. And tell Bill we missed him, even though we didn't really, so.
He really wanted to be.
I know he did, yes. We talked this morning on the phone, so. Thank you. Next item is Resolution Number 2018-19 regarding surplus property. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maumell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2018-19, a resolution to approve the disposal of city surplus property.
There she is. All right. All right. This is a, a senior services car. So Ms. Vogler, if you want to come up and explain what we're doing here?
Thank you, sir. We have a 2007 Chevy Malibu that we'd like to, we're requesting for surplus. It's a vehicle that came to a second hand, but it was a very good car. It served its purpose. We have purchased a replacement car that was within our budget, and we're asking to surplus this vehicle. The value of it for Kelley Blue Book was thirteen ninety-six to twenty-one oh five.
It's time to go.
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Man, that's almost scrap metal, that's the price.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Is this the red car?
Yes, it is the red car.
Oh, we need rid of that car. I've driven it too many times.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept Resolution 2018-19.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2018-19. Is there any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Mosley?
Does it really have slack in the steering?
It's got a lot more than that, but that too, that too, it kind of does this in a row.
Mileage has eighty-nine thousand. Card just did not last very long. I usually don't buy a card until it has a hundred...
Chevy.
Yeah. It's, so we've been told that when you have different vehicle, or different drivers every day in the same vehicle, that they drive differently and the vehicle wears differently. And that's a big reason why our vehicles are low mileage, but in not very good condition.
Can you get it to drive better, man? All right. Thank you very much.
Well, and I think it's just a matter of, too, I mean, it's on a lot of short trips, too, where, you know, highway miles are different than city miles, too, so, you know, but, because I know that you still get some of our police cars and things like that, they may have less miles on them, but they run a lot, you know? So, yeah. But, all right. Do I hear a motion to, we got one, all right, we got it, all right. I didn't write it down. All right. We got a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 2018-19 regarding surplus property. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
In case Councilmember Mosley wants to know, where will you be selling the car?
We have deals.
It's like a deal to me.
It's got less than a hundred thousand. That'd be a new car to you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item is Resolution Number 2018-20. Okay. And it's, this is bad, but it says to amend the typographical error in Resolution 2018, and it's dash seventeen, not eighteen.
Oh, no.
Well, this is, it's just in the, it's just in the title on the, on the agenda, so it's not in the resolution itself. So we're amending our typographical error on Resolution 2018-17, and when you look at the resolution, it is correct in there, so we're good. So Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maumell, Plaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2018-20, a resolution to amend a resolution 2018-17 to correct a typographical error.
Okay. And this is a, if you look at 2018-20, there was seventy-five thousand dollars taken out of the general fund balance, but there was a hundred and nine thousand dollars put in police salaries. So it was just, the number was wrong that was in the area that was putting the money in. It was a hundred and nine thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars. So we want to make that correction, and it's not necessarily a budget amendment, and so I don't know how we're going to show this on the back of the report. I guess as a negative number to make the numbers add up, but it's going to be a challenge to figure that out. But, so basically, we're reducing the amount that was put in the police department salaries by twenty, thirty, thirty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Wait, Mike, just move on, and that'll solve the problem.
Well, no. We really need to change it, so that, because what would happen is, we'd be putting a hundred and nine thousand dollars in there, but we didn't pull but seventy-five thousand out, so we'd be short at the end of the year, even though they don't need that money in there, so. Yeah. Yeah. I promise you, he doesn't need it.
Yeah, right.
What? It wouldn't really be in there, right? It'd be us sort of making thirty-four thousand dollars appear where there wasn't thirty-four thousand dollars.
Make a motion that we accept Resolution 2018-20.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept Resolution Number 2018-20. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, if all in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. All right. Thank you all very much. Next item is just under Mayor's comments. Fourth Fest recap. I felt like we had a really good Fourth Fest. I do believe the parade, the watchers was down a little bit, the spectators for the parade. It was in the middle of the week, Wednesday. It was very hot, so all that could have led to that. I don't know, but it just, the, the start of the parade wasn't as full, and then as you get to the end, normally they're just stacked in there at the end, and they weren't there this year. In fact, I had candy left over, so if y'all need candy, I've got Tootsie Rolls and Tootsie Pops and all that. And so I, I don't know why, but we had candy left over, and I know I was throwing more, as much as I normally throw, so, but we did have candy left over. But from there, after the parade, they had cardboard boat race. They had fourteen entries. That's the largest number of entries we've ever had in the cardboard boat race. Now, two boats ran twice with different people in them, so, so, and not a single boat sunk. Now, some of them got pretty low in the water and barely made it across, but all of them made it across. And, but the two State Farm agencies, Anthony Ottwell and Lee Tuckshorn, they sponsored that, and then they had a challenge race at the end, and one of them was totally dressed, two of them were dressed up as George Washington crossing the Delaware. So they were in full costume, and they made it across. And so, and they even, you know, walked around wearing that the rest of the day, too, so. But we appreciate State Farm Insurance, both of them, for supporting that event. So we had a large crowd watch the cardboard boat race, and then they moved right into the park. We had a lot of food vendors out there, and then starting around seven-thirty, we started having a large crowd show up to hear the band play, and they were a good band. And then at nine-thirty, well, actually, at nine-twenty-nine, the fireworks went off, and it was one of the best fireworks shows we've had in a long time. The finale was really good, and then it was kind of a fake finale because it all went off, and then they shot a few more off. And then we even, about thirty minutes later, we shot off a half a box that didn't fire. So, but we beat the ten-thirty deadline, so, but we actually did. We had a really good fireworks show, and it was really good. Well attended, no major issues other than a fender bender at the very end of the event where three cars got, had to be towed off somehow parked in the parking lot. I don't know. But that was the biggest crisis we had all night, was that three cars got into one another as they were trying to leave the fireworks show. So, and then also, I included a, a memo from the, well, it's a memo to the chief, actually, from Tanya Gocher, Tanya Gocher, and talked about the fireworks calls. I just wanted that in your packet. We had twenty-five calls on fireworks over about a ten-day period. Fifteen of those occurred after ten-thirty on July the fourth until a few minutes after midnight on the fourth. So fifteen of the twenty-five calls, they were still coming in the following Saturday and Sunday with fireworks still being shot in Maumell. So I don't know. Chief, do you want to elaborate on that, or?
Just real quickly, if you notice, we didn't have any on the third, which was unusual, but we did comment about that. We were sitting there talking about, we didn't hear any, any fireworks going off on the third. Most of the calls on the fourth were, several of them were during the hours where you could shoot fireworks, and we just said, hey, you can. Some people are, are getting wise and saying, well, they're in the street, and there's too many of them or something. So we do respond to those, and then we also tell the ones that are just saying that they're shooting fireworks that they can until ten-thirty, so ten-thirty, the phones start ringing, which is what we expect and what we want and what we staff for. So that's a good thing, and I think our last one on that day was right at a couple of minutes after midnight. So I think by and large, we did about what we expect, what we, again, prepare and staff for. People are compliant. When we ask them to shut it down, they do. And I think by and large, we're a community that really cares about each other, and we don't do real stupid things. But if you have any questions?
I've got, I've got a question for you. I had a couple of folks that complained about somebody shooting a whole lot of fireworks in a commercial parking lot, and they said it was just pitted out the next day. I said, call the police, and maybe next year the police can go by and kind of monitor that as they're circling the city, make sure somebody doesn't do it again. Did I tell them wrong?
Oh, no, sir, absolutely. We will do that, and if, like I said, if they'll bring it to our attention, we'll, we'll increase our presence in those areas, absolutely. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you.
And there's a couple that we know that are going to maybe have a pretty big display.
In the rules.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I did get some, I got a couple of emails and a couple of phone calls and a text on people that were shooting fireworks not only after ten-thirty, but the following day, or two, or three. And I'm just curious, do you think a percentage, a reasonable percentage of that could be people that are located technically outside the city limits in the county, and it's echoing, or?
In the north end of town, you can almost count on that. Yes, sir. And, and sometimes you will hear, you can tell about where it is, and oftentimes, when you're driving, you can keep going toward that sound and realize that it's, it's not in our city. So, yes, sir, anytime you're hearing things on the north end of town like that, and as a matter of fact, that goes for our shots fired calls, too, when people call and say they hear gunfire on the north end of town. They, in all likelihood, are hearing gunfire. It's just coming from an area where it is illegal. But, yes, sir, I attribute to some of that, and also, there's some carryover. Some of the kids still have fireworks left over during the day and want to shoot them. You hear a lot of firecrackers during the day of the fifth and the sixth, usually, again, because the, the cool stuff that goes off at night is gone, but a lot of the firecrackers are still around. So we'll still see some of that and have to chase that down.
Well, not only fireworks, but I have noticed, you know, when you, when you live on the river or close to the river, it echoes something terrible out there, and they can be on the other side of the river, and it sounds like it's in your backyard.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, sir. And it just acts as a natural vacuum coming through there also.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
All right. The next item is the Planning Commission report, and that will be done after the Planning Commission meeting, which is the...
Fifth, twenty-sixth.